Good evening and welcome to the February twenty six, two thousand and twenty five Hybrid Planning Commission Meeting. I am JB Gibson, Vice Chair. Chair Dan Thompson is participating remotely and asked that I lead tonight's meeting. Tonight's Hybrid Planning Commission Meeting is being brought to you by Zoom. Welcome to all and thank you for joining us tonight. Commissioners, please have your microphones on for the roll call. Deputy Clerk, please call the roll.
Thank you, Vice Chair Gibson. Chair Thompson?
Here, present.
Vice Chair Gibson?
Here.
Commissioner Nice?
Present.
Commissioner Accuse? And Commissioner Perez previously asked for an excuse absence.
Yes, let the record show that Commissioner Perez previously requested an excuse absence and that a quorum is present. The Planning Commission meets in person and continues to utilize the Zoom platform. I will do my best to recognize commissioners in the order in which hands are raised. After being recognized, you may ask your questions. Our first item of business is public appearances. There is an opportunity for anyone to speak to the commission about the issues of concern. Deputy Clerk, is there anyone who has signed up for appearances as of four P M. today that wishes to address the commission?
Vice Chair, as of four P M. this afternoon, no one had signed up to speak. Thank you.
Okay. The first item of regular business is to review and consider approving the January twenty second meeting minutes. Commissioners, may I have a motion to approve the minutes?
This is Commissioner Thompson. I so move.
Is there a second?
Second.
There is a motion by Chair Thompson and a second by Commissioner Nice to approve the minutes. Is there any discussion on this item? Hearing none, Deputy Clerk, please conduct a roll call. Commissioners, please turn on your microphones.
Thank you, Vice Chair. Chair Thompson?
Yes.
Commissioner Nice?
Yes.
And Vice Chair Gibson?
Yes.
Thank you.
Motion passes. The second item of regular business is Planning Commission Agenda Bill twenty five oh three, Planning Commission Work Plan. Welcome Principal Planner, Adam Zach.
Thank you. Let me share my screen here. Get started. All right. There we go. So hopefully y'all can see my slide deck there. So tonight, I'm Principal Planner, Adam Zach, with the Department of Community Planning and Development. And tonight, we wanted to give you an overview of the upcoming work program for the Planning Commission, just to give you a little bit of a heads up of what is coming. And then also kind of the what to expect as we review these items, the steps of the process, that sort of thing. And so I already kind of went over that. I wanted to start with looking at the Planning Commission duties and responsibilities as established in the city code. So the Planning Commission exists primarily to do two things. They make recommendations. You'll be making recommendations to the City Council regarding amendments to the Comprehensive Plan and amendments to the development regulations. And those development regulations are entitled nineteen of the Mercer Island City Code. The work plan for the Planning Commission is all established by the City Council. There's a couple of different ways that they do that, and we'll go over those in a moment here. To start with, the Comprehensive Plan is the policy document for the city that coordinates the city's actions as it plans for the future. A lot of the requirements for the Comprehensive Plan are set at the state level by the Washington Growth Management Act, or GMA. We'll end up talking about GMA quite a bit over the course of our work together. It really kind of sets the baseline of what will be or how we'll be planning at the Comprehensive Plan level. And under the GMA, the Comprehensive Plan can be amended once per year. So there's a limit to the number of amendments that can be considered. No, that's okay. Yeah, why don't I? I'll let you get settled. Yeah, you're good. Okay. So the other thing that the Planning Commission reviews in addition to the Comprehensive Plan are the development regulations. And these are one of the main ways that the city implements its Comprehensive Plan. So the policies of the Cop Plan will set kind of a general direction. It'll say something like, you know, allow middle housing consistent with state law. And then the city then adopts development regulations that establish how the city is actually going to allow the middle housing or whatever the policy direction is in the Cop Plan. And those development regulations are established in Title nineteen of the city code, as I mentioned earlier. And so as we as we review, we really keep the Planning Commission focused on that Title nineteen, those development regulations. We have a bunch of other titles, like Title seventeen is the construction code. That's not something that the Planning Commission really generally takes up or provides input on. Unlike the unlike the Comprehensive Plan, the development regulations can be amended at any time during the year, and there's no limit to the number of amendments that we can initiate in a given year. The so as I mentioned, there's a couple of different ways that projects are added to the Planning Commission's work plan. The primary way that projects get added to the work plan is through a process called the annual docket. This is conducted once a year, and it's a it's an opportunity for the public, members of the Planning Commission, the City Council, city staff can propose amendments. It's a it's a window when folks can weigh in on the things that may need to be amended in both the Comprehensive Plan and the development regulations. And that window is open. We accept applications for the annual docket from September first to October first each year. And then typically, the Planning Commission then takes a look at the annual docket in October and makes a recommendation of the council. Then the council ultimately sets the docket for the upcoming year. So most of the projects that we'll be looking at tonight were added to your work plan through that annual docket process. Because we've we've had our Comprehensive Plan update in in review for a while, some of the some of the projects were docketed, you know, in two thousand and twenty three and two thousand and twenty four. So they a couple of these things have been on our work plan for a while, and now that we're done with the Cop Plan, we can we can start working on those. The other way outside of the annual docket that projects are added to the work plan is by a council action. So by motion, the the City Council can add projects to the Planning Commission's work plan. The the one stipulation that the code includes is that at the time that they add those projects, that they include some kind of scope if necessary. And if there's like additional resources, they need to be allocated at the time that the project's initiated in this way. Usually with these additional projects, they're typically added to the work plan in response to like statewide legislation. So when the when the legislature concludes its work at the end of at the end of the spring, if there are bills that we need to respond to or amendments we need to make to maintain consistency with the state law, the council will add them there. Also, if if other subjects, you know, things will come up throughout the year that the council wants us to take a look at or wants the Planning Commission to provide input on, that they will also add them through this process. So those are the two primary ways that projects are added to your work plan. Now, as we go through these different legislative projects, so code amendments and Comprehensive Plan amendments, there are some kind of standard steps that we use that are laid out in the city code. The city code establishes requirements for, you know, that the Planning Commission must hold a public hearing before making a recommendation, those kinds of procedural steps. I've summarized them here on the slide. We usually start with an initial briefing. And this is where we'll provide the background information about the Development Code Amendment or the proposed amendment. And then typically, those initial briefings will include like a staff-generated draft. And usually at that first step, the the initial briefing and the second Planning Commission briefing, that's where we get input from you to refine that draft. So if there are proposed amendments that, you know, I think later we'll be looking at temporary uses, you know, if the if the permit type, if we want to change the land use review type for that, you can propose that during those initial briefings, then that'll get incorporated into the drafts as we as we move through the process. After we've had, oh, and oftentimes with like a simpler code amendment project, we'll combine steps one and two on the slide here, so that initial briefing and the second briefing, typically for those simpler projects, we can get the input incorporated with only needing that with a single briefing before the public hearing. Then after we've refined those drafts, we then post the required notices. Any public hearing requires a thirty day notice. So when, for example, we're going to have a public hearing at our next meeting, we've already published the public hearing notice so that there so that the public has the information ahead of time, they know when they can weigh in. And then we hold a public hearing. The public hearing is the opportunity for the members of the public to directly directly address the Planning Commission and weigh in on on the proposed amendments and give you feedback that will help you as you wrap up your recommendation. And then typically at the same meeting that we hold the public hearing, after the commission closes the public hearing, you then enter deliberations and and ultimately make your recommendation to the City Council. As I mentioned, those usually happen at the same meeting. For more complicated projects, we can extend deliberations to a second meeting if we need to or if that's what it takes. And then from there, your recommendation then goes to the City Council for their review. The City Council takes at least two readings on any ordinance to amend. And at that point, they can either take the Planning Commission's recommendation, they can accept it and make amendments, or they can remand it back to the Planning Commission and ask you to take another look at it with some additional direction. So that's overall a very quick summary of a sometimes long process. So those are the general steps that we'll be expecting to take for each of these projects that I'll give you a run through now. We do include some additional steps for those more complicated projects. I've mentioned the Comprehensive Plan update that we just completed. That was a pretty complicated process that took the Planning Commission about two years to complete, actually more than two years to complete, because there was there was just a lot of text to get through. And so for those more complicated projects, we will add additional steps to the process. And usually those additional steps are to allow for additional public input or give you some additional rounds to review the proposal. A few years ago, the city adopted some regulations for marinas, which are pretty complicated shoreline use. And they they took a couple of rounds of review to get through that, because there were a lot of there were just a lot of things to consider through that process. So for those for those more complicated projects, we'll add those, we'll try to add those additional steps in. And generally with these more complicated projects too, we will work with the City Council to to define the scope of work in advance of bringing it to the Planning Commission. So for example, with the to return to the Cop Plan update, because it's top of mind for me, you know, we scoped that project with the council, they they gave us pretty clear direction about how they wanted the how broad the amendments should be for the different elements. And then we took that to the Planning Commission and we completed that work as scoped. So that's typically what we do for those more complicated projects. Moving now to the actually, before I move on to the to the actual upcoming work plan, is there are there any questions? You have any questions? Great. I'll keep rolling then. So looking ahead at our two thousand and twenty five work plan, there's a big tentative here at the top. There we know what we'll be bringing forward in the next couple of months, but there's still some variables. We're waiting for some direction from the council on. So some of the scheduling of this may change a bit, but these are the projects that are that we're looking ahead to to start bringing forward in the in the next year. The first project other than well, we'll begin temporary uses, and I don't I don't want to steal Molly's thunder, so I'll leave that for her. But the the next project that we'll start looking at next next month is a project to comply with recent statewide legislation, House Bill ten forty two, which requires cities to allow new dwelling units in existing buildings. And so we'll we'll start taking a look at a draft of those regulations at the next meeting. And we're expecting that this will amend a couple of chapters in the city code. And we're planning, like I said, to bring this forward in March and then with a public hearing expected in April. So this is a simpler project, so that's why we're we're planning on or we're expecting that it'll only require two Planning Commission touches. The initial briefing and the public hearing. The next the next code amendment was docketed in two thousand and twenty four or docketed for two thousand and twenty four, following the Comprehensive Plan periodic review. And it's a project to clarify how the downhill facade height is determined in our single-family residential zones. This is a really narrow amendment that's really looking at one specific section of nineteen oh two zero two zero E. So we're really going to be dialed into just one section there. And we're planning to bring that forward in April and come back for a public hearing in May. The next the next project is looking at development code amendments to comply with another change in the state law, House Bill nineteen ninety eight, which requires any cities planning under GMA to allow co-living housing in all zones where multifamily residential uses are allowed. Co-living housing is kind of it it's where there are some communal spaces, some communal living spaces, but individual rooms are rented out, kind of like a boarding house. And this project is expected to result in a new section of the code, because we don't currently have regulations specific to this use. And we'll plan on bringing this forward after we get through downhill facade height. So now this we've now got to the point where the the schedule will be a little bit more tentative as we move forward, depending on on what ends up transpiring with the legislature. But we definitely know that in the fall, the Planning Commission will be considering the annual docket. Again, this is the process by which those projects get added to your work plan. And well, we plan on bringing that forward in October to get I I listed the public hearing. There isn't actually a public hearing required for the annual docket. And so it's a typo on the slide, but that's that's what we plan on working on in the with you in the fall. So that concludes my slide deck. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to take those now.
This is Chair Thompson. I have a couple of questions. There's a couple of items in there such as the temporary use permit where the public hearing is on the Planning Commission following the study session. I don't understand that. I mean, the study session allows us to discuss and and learn about an issue. The following Planning Commission is when we are able to consider and add amendments and get the final proposed ordinance. And then the public hearing occurs. So I I'm wondering if there isn't supposed to be another month in there on some of these. My second question is, I thought I saw where the new park zone was going to be one of the issues coming up in the spring. So those are my two questions.
Okay, I'll start with the first one. So typically, for the simpler projects, we do plan on having the study session followed by a public hearing, sticking to two meetings there. The deliberations section of that meeting next week, or sorry, next month, would be the point at which you could consider those amendments. So depending on what comments we receive on that proposal, we can provide those alternatives for the public to provide comments on at the next meeting. You can consider those comments as you put together your recommendation. Of course, with any of these, as we're working through them, if we find that there is, you know, an unexpected issue that came up or, you know, the Planning Commission needs more time, we 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 have the option. We're not necessarily locked into having only the two meetings. So it really depends, but we do expect that with temporary uses, we'll be able to get through that in the in the two-meeting format as proposed.
I do not. This is a massive ordinance. Massive change to the code. I've gone through this process, you know, for fifteen years now as a member of the public. It's it's too hard for the member of the public to give their comments when they don't know what the actual ordinance is. I believe a better procedure is you have the study session, you have a Planning Commission meeting where we have our amendments that we are considering, and then you take that to the public. So they know exactly what it's not a moving ball. They know what we are thinking of so that they can comment. And I I disagree that the temporary use permit is a minor ordinance.
So, oh, sorry, I see our city attorney, Kim, has raised her hand.
I just wanted to make a comment about the moving ball. We need to make sure that when this goes to public hearing, it still is a moving ball so that when you get the public's comments, there is still an opportunity for changes to be made. So I just want to make sure it's not a completely final ordinance that goes to public hearing. But I understand what you're saying also, Chair Thompson, that you want it to be in at least a form where the Planning Commission's draft is in there.
Just raise your hand.
Yeah.
Vice Chair Gibson is the acting chair tonight, so.
Hi, thank you. I I think that's an interesting comment, and I appreciate it. I think part of the problem that we faced in the past is that as commissioners, we were not organized enough with our amendments, and there were a lot of surprises. So I think the hope is, and this is my understanding, that kind of the new directive of this Planning Commission is that our initial study session is today, where we're going to learn about it. And then prior to the next meeting, next month, we will have given staff our proposed amendments in advance of the meeting so that when the public comes to comment, they will see those proposed amendments. That's my understanding is that we as a commission are supposed to behave more disciplined than we did in the past and provide those amendments in the interest of saving time and city staff money. That's my understanding, is that we won't have that situation that the chair refers to, that there are a bunch of surprises at the second study session. Is that the intent or?
That's the idea. Yeah. So for sorry, we are kind of jumping ahead to temporary uses a little bit, but for example, to to keep that as an example, we're asking for your comments by the fourteenth of March. That'll give us a chance to to publish the packet ahead of time for the meeting and include all of those proposed amendments from your comments. And that'll give the public the opportunity to review those comments at the same time that the Planning Commission is considering them. So yes.
And a follow-up question on that. So the amendments don't need a thirty day notice, just the original proposed.
Correct. Yeah. So the the thirty day noticing requirement is specific to the public hearing itself, not the content of the public hearing. So in in some in some instances, you may have to but I won't get into it. There there's some there's some complicating factors. We'll cross that bridge if we get to it. But yes, the thirty day comment period is or thirty day notice period is for the public hearing. There was a second question that Chair Thompson asked. And I before I go to that, are there any other questions about the public hearing process? Okay. And it was a minute ago that the question was asked, so hopefully I remembered it. But the question was about the park zone. So we do expect that the Parks and Recreation Committee will sorry, Parks and Recreation Commission will provide a draft of zoning regulations for a new park zone. But we're not sure exactly when that's going to wrap up. And so we wanted to let them wrap up their that that's one of those variables I was referencing in the schedule. So when when the Parks and Recreation Commission does wrap up that work, we will then bring it forward for the Planning Commission to consider and review. Are there any other questions about the upcoming work plan?
I had one, just looking at the at the list, it looks like that the the order in which these are did not necessarily align with the years that they were docketed. What sets the priority or order of these?
So some of that is staff discretion. We were looking at the work that was ahead of the Planning Commission and tried to schedule projects that the Planning Commission could get done to knock out some of the low-hanging fruit, particularly like House Bill ten forty two and House Bill nineteen ninety eight. Those those regulations, we we need to adopt something by June thirtieth for House Bill ten forty two and by the end of the year for House Bill nineteen ninety eight. So we're working within that framework and then also the the resources we have available, the time that we have, yeah.
And then another question, just looking at the overall docket of open items, are you also looking at that in combining items when applicable or if there's overlap of docketed items?
Yes, as as we can. Because things do, as we start to roll forward projects from year to year, sometimes those may be duplicative or there may be two proposals that address the same thing. And where we can, we'll try to we try to wrap those together, because it's always better to only do one code amendment than four, right? So.
All right. Any other questions for Adam?
Vice Chair, if I can just jump in quickly, I'd like to go back to the the public hearing conversation from a few minutes ago and add that the commission also has the ability to not only continue their deliberations to another meeting, but the commission can also if it sees fit, continue a public hearing on a matter to its next meeting as well. That's not necessarily a practice that occurs all that often, but certainly if there was a subject that came before the commission and the commission, majority of the commission felt that there would be public benefit and benefit to the city as well to continue the public hearing to a date certain, that is an option that always exists, and we have the ability to do that.
Great. Thank you for that clarification. And thank you, Adam.
Yeah, thank you.
The second item of regular business is Planning Commission Agenda Bill twenty five oh five, Permanent Regulations for Temporary Uses and Structures Including Outdoor Dining. Welcome Senior Planner, Molly McGuire.
All right, let me share my screen.
All right, let me share my screen. All right. All right, so I'm Molly McGuire, Senior Planner with Community Planning and Development. And we'll be going over the permanent regulations for temporary uses and structures on uh private property, um.
You're, you need to share your screen in the zoom meeting.
Oh, I thought I was. One second. There it is. No.
That was the word document.
Second. Sorry about this. There we go. We good now? Okay. All right, um, so to give you a little bit of background on how we got to this point. Um, prior to the adoption of ordinance number twenty-four C O seven. Uh, the Mercer Island City Code did not contain any regulations for temporary uses and structures. Um, and this resulted in the city um receiving inquiries from property owners that wanted to set up. A lemonade stand in their front yard or a fruit stand um on a property in town center. Um, and because of the way the language in the code read, um, these uses would not be allowed. And um the standards in the code are more geared towards uh permanent development. Um, so in December of twenty twenty-three, the city council approved the twenty twenty-four docket. Which included uh two separate proposals, one by the city and the other by the Mercer Island Country Club. Uh, to establish regulations for these uses that um are intended to be temporary. Um, so council directed these interim regulations to provide a path forward for the country club to get to a point where they could operate. Um, while more permanent regulations were developed, and that's through this process. Um, so the interim regulations that are currently in place until they expire in June of this year. Um, include the regulations for temporary outdoor dining on both private and public property. Uh, which were originally adopted in twenty twenty-one. And so that's why the draft language also includes. Uh, the amendments in the commerce in public property section that I will talk about later. Uh, so the purpose of this meeting is an initial briefing, like Adam talked about in the process, the first step. Uh, to start refining the draft regulations and to give you some background. And the uh development regulations that are in front of you is a temporary fix. To quickly get the development to a point where it could occur, but these are expected to be revised significantly throughout the process. Um, with planning commission feedback. Um, and it provided a pathway forward for this development to occur. But um is subject to change. So what are temporary uses and structures? Um, they include everything from garage sales to fruit or lemonade stands. Um, tents associated with weddings or family reunions, um, to more larger-scale events like markets or festivals. Um, and without regulations or standards for these types of uses and structures, um, they either go unpermitted and unregulated. And might be subject to code enforcement, um, or they would just be outright prohibited. Um, so the city needs these regulations to give these uses some parameters, um, to mitigate any foreseeable adverse impacts to the community. Um, while also limiting barriers um to the development of structures uh that the community desires. Um, so this is an overview of what um the regulations uh touch. So it amends two sec, two existing sections in the code, um, the Commerce on Public Property section. And then um a small amendment in that land use to review types table, and then it creates an entire new section. Um, in nineteen oh six one three zero for temporary uses and structures on private property specifically. Um, so now I'll switch over to um the draft code. Um, and we'll kind of walk through that, um, so that we can give an overview and kind of the background of these. Initial draft, this initial draft language, um. And feel, does anyone have any questions on the background or how we got to this point?
Commissioner Accuse.
Thank you. Um, would you like us to ask questions as you go? Or will you stop at the end of each section of code and offer opportunity for questions?
I think um it might be best to kind of go through the entire um development code. And then um we can come back um at the end and um get all the questions. And I can keep the screen up and scroll back and forth. Um, but let's get through um kind of how the code is first. Okay, so the first amendment is in the Commerce on Public Property section. Um, down in D four, um, which is just to clarify that non-temporary uses are subject to the design stand. Standards, um, the design requirements in the town center plan, um, pretty minimal uh code change. Um, but just clarifies that uh the permanent uses or improvements would be uh subject to design review. Um, and the next one is in E where um. It clarifies that outdoor food and beverage services on uh adjacent public property are temporary. And not subject to design commission review or approval. Um, these amendments occurred in twenty twenty-one in response to the COVID nineteen pandemic. To allow for eating and drinking establishments to serve food and beverages in the right of way. And aligns with the Washington State Liquor and Cannabis Board rules that are now permanent as of last year, I believe. All right, and moving along to the new section uh for temporary use permits. Um, the first standard is to identify the purpose, which is to authorize a user structure on private property on a short-term basis. And this statement effectively allows temporary uses and structures to occur on any private property in the city. Um, regardless of the zone or the existing use of the property. Um, if there are certain zones or um other criteria that. We, that you would like um the temporary uses to be authorized on, then we can explore those um amendments. Um, and uh, yeah, feedback. Uh, section two, or section B clarifies when a permit is required for a temporary use. Um, or structure and allows a temporary user structure to be authorized uh when it complies with the standards of this chapter. Um, it also clarifies who can apply for the permit and that the use or structure may be subject to other permitting and review requirements. Of the M I C C and other public agencies. Um, this is just to ensure that the user structure is in compliance. With requirements of building or fire codes, for example. Uh, section C establishes the processing requirements for a temporary use permit. Um, just to clarify, temporary use permit is a new permit type. Um, and as drafted, would be subject to the review procedures of a type-one land use review. Um, which are reviews that are based on clear, objective, and nondiscretionary standards, or standards that require the application. Of professional expertise on technical issues. Um, I understand that there were some comments from Chair Thompson. Um. Regarding the noticing requirement for the type-one land use permit and whether a type-two land use permit would be more appropriate. Um, for certain temporary uses and structures, so that would be something to consider as the commission drafts amendments or provides feedback on these regulations. Um, type-two land use permits are subject to the public notification requirements. Um, in the administrative code, which basically means that the application, once the application is determined to be complete. It will be posted in the city's weekly permit bulletin, um, which is different than a notice of application. Uh, which is what the type-three and four land use reviews are subject to. Um, if you need more information on the different review types, um, I'm happy to provide that information. Um, if the planning commission would like to consider a different land use review type, um, and that amendment can be made. All right, and section D allows for certain temporary uses to occur on private property without a permit. Uh, but to clarify, it does not exempt these permits from the standards set forth in this chapter. Uh, for example, nuisance controls or uh traffic circulation. Um, so these activities are generally low-impact and adverse effects are not necessarily anticipated. Um, which is why they're exempt from needing a physical permit to operate. Um, and if there are other uses that you think should be included in here or uses listed here that you think. Um, should go through the permitting process, uh, that would be great feedback to have. All right, um, section E is where you'll find the criteria for approval of a temporary use permit application. Um, the applicant is required to demonstrate that the temporary use meets all of the criteria in this section as part of their application. Um, and we would like feedback on this section as well, uh, while keeping in mind that these criteria for approval. Will apply to all temporary uses, whether a permit is required or not. So that means that both a lemonade stand or a more large-scale use, like a market, would be subject to these standards. Um, the next section in section F kind of provides more parameters for high, higher-impact uses. Uh, that are more specific to um those uses. And if, when, at the end, if we want to go through each of these criteria and kind of break them down, uh, we can do that as well. Um, so like I said, section F ensures more high-impact uses have the appropriate regulations and parameters to mitigate anticipated impacts. Um, so these would, conditions would apply um in addition to the criteria for approval in the last section. Um, mobile food vendors are in here as well as carryover from language um established in the ordinance. Um, that allows existing eating and drinking establishments to utilize private parking areas immediately adjacent to the business. For outdoor food and beverage service, um, subject to certain standards. Um, so these are a little bit more specific to certain uses, and if there are other uses. Um, that the commission believes should have additional conditions in place, um, this is where those amendments um would go. Um, those additional standards can also be things like dimensional standards for height or setbacks. Um, and those could also go if um. You wanted those certain dimensional standards to apply for all temporary uses, um, those could go in the criteria for approval section. Um, so it really depends on if it's more geared toward a specific use or structure or broad, applies broadly. Section G establishes the maximum time limitations for these temporary uses. And they're broken up into four different categories depending on the use. Um, I can't get them all on the screen, but um, as proposed, only certain categories would be able to request. Uh, that thirty-day extension, and that's for temporary uses and structures not listed as exempt or mobile food vendors. Um, and activities that are listed as exempt, which are related to another permit, um, for example, a building permit. Um, so this is another area where feedback would be great. The um, the one hundred and eighty-day maximum duration was drafted to align with the building code. Where a structure is considered temporary if it is in place for less than a hundred and eighty days, um, but that uh standard can be changed. Uh, section H puts a limitation on activity um in place that a. Puts a limitation on activity that a temporary use permit cannot be applied for within uh three months of the expiration of a previous temporary use permit. Um, and again, if the planning commission has any feedback on the duration or other parameters here for multiple temporary use permits. Uh, on a property, this would be the place to provide those.
Sorry, Ed, I'm just gonna jump in here, because I I think this is a good example of. When we're, when we're talking about um providing your comments on the draft. Um, so on the li, this limitation for activity section here, the kind of feedback that we're looking for is if you can. If you think this three-month period needs to be different. So let's say you want it to be four. If your comment can highlight. Change three to four or something like that, you can, you can provide that like in strikeout underlined or track changes. But that, that kind of feedback will be really helpful for us. Um, it it then we can put that into the draft and and the whole planning commission can kind of see how that might change. Um, so as we're going through these and we're thinking about, we're, we're highlighting places where we might look for your feedback. That's the kind of thing we're looking for is like uh specific, like a specific text amendment to to the code. Um, that'll, that'll help us help you kind of get through the the review process. Sorry, thanks.
Thank you. Okay, and uh quickly, the last couple of sections here, um. Touch on standards for removal of the temporary use, uh, where the site must be returned to equal or better condition. Um, this effectively defines all of the uses and structures that we talked about above as temporary. Uh, because there will be a date established that the permit, uh, with the permit that the user structure must be removed. Um, so. Um, yeah, and also if necessary, the last section also includes a mechanism for the city to require a financial guarantee. For the removal of the temporary use or to assure compliance with um the conditions of the temporary use permit if they are put in place uh by the code official. Um, the last section, we already uh discussed um the change to the use table. Uh, which is just to add temporary use uh permit in the type-one uh review type. Um, again, uh, feedback is welcome and requested um for that uh change. Um, and I'll jump back to the slides quickly. Just for this last, um. Just reiterating that additional comments and your requested amendments can be sent uh to me prior to March fourteenth. And I will incorporate them, um, and then we'll get those out. All right, and we can go to questions or um feedback.
Commissioners, are there any questions for Molly?
Uh, this is Chair Thompson. I do have a question. Is the decision whether to grant a temporary use permit. Solely within the discretion of the code official, which is the director of the C Community Planning Department. Without any review uh by the planning commission or council?
Uh, as proposed, type-one uh temporary use or type-one land use reviews, uh, the decision is done by the code official. Um, other permit types um have this different decision bodies.
Thank you. Are there any other comments? Commissioner Accuse.
I have a couple of questions. I'm trying to read my own handwriting. Um, I'm curious about uh M I C C nineteen oh six oh five oh. I'm wondering what that means. Maybe I should read it for the benefit of those at home. Um, regarding uh. Item D. Or wait a minute, the criteria for. Where's it? Oh, it's C, the application process. Um, there's some language that is a little bit, this is on two pages. Um, there's some language there that I just found a little bit concerning. Um, wondering about how that relates to the economic development plan. Um, the oh five oh, just generally, the commerce on public property, um, the economic development plan. Um, that we did as part of the comp plan, it really encourages incubator activity, like pop-up shops and restaurants. And uh, I see that you, I'm ki, I'm connecting this, sorry, I'm in real time, connecting this to what we just talked about. In terms of um. The food vendors and their ability to renew for thirty-day periods. Does that mean that, um, because I assume that if we want to incubate businesses and allow restaurants to try as a pop-up shop or something. Um, or as a food truck or something, we want them to have time to do proof of consent. um, or as a food truck or something, we want them to have time to do proof of concept. So can they do those up to thirty day renewals up to five more times so that it's a total of a a hundred and eighty days or less? Is that what that means?
So I think one of the differences is the commerce on public property is permitted through a separate permit process. The um, use of the right of way permit, um, and I'm actually not sure on the standards of those. So if the food trucks are on public property, they would not be subject to the standards um, in the temporary use in that nineteen oh six one three zero section. So this is only the nineteen oh six one three zero is only regulating those temporary uses that are on private property. Um, the question about the extensions um for food trucks on private property, though. Um, the mobile food vendors, as proposed, would have a maximum of thirty days. Um, and then you would have to wait that three month period um in order to apply for another temporary use permit. Those would not be subject to the extension. That question?
So they they cannot renew and have sixty days in one spot. We do have a food truck vendor right now that's been there for several months, so that use would be excluded if this was passed as written.
I believe that would make it a nonconforming use.
Okay, thank you.
Do you have an issue?
Um, and then I have another question, um. But someone else can take a turn if they want.
Commissioner Nice?
Yes, thank you. So um, new to this, but you have some temporary regulations that you have been working under um or working with. What have you permitted, what has been permitted with those codes? It would be helpful to me to understand what activities, and I thought in some of the um documents I read that there were several permits for permits or something. Um, I heard the country club, I didn't think I read that in the documents that were sent. Could you clarify kind of what has occurred in the temporary regulations and how long those activities have occurred for?
Yeah, um, I don't necessarily have specific details of how long they've occurred, but I do know that the there have been four temporary use permits that have been approved uh for last year. Um, that's three kind of tennis bubble like structures um on various sports facilities. And then one was for um an ice cream stand.
And one of that commit uh, the country club is one of those?
Yes, yep.
The offer tennis courts?
Yeah, the tennis bubble. Yeah.
Uh, I had one question about the public use. So in here, I didn't see anything about a uh duration of the temporary use. It, and then I did see something about renewals. So if is there the opportunity for somebody if they uh are using uh, or if they had get a temporary use on public property, that they can kind of stay there indefinitely uh, and keep renewing their permit um to keep operating on public property?
Yeah, I am actually not super familiar with the uh, how the right of way permit, uh, the right of way use permit works um, and what's included in uh that application. Um, so I can get that information um and see if there's those parameters in those decisions for those applications.
Yeah, I guess my comment to this would be that uh if it truly is a temporary use or there's a temporary structure associated with uh the public right of way, that a duration should be uh capped and the renewal should be set up in a way that uh it it's not a perpetual use or ongoing for uh an indefinite time period. Um, related to that, uh I I did see that there was a reference to another code section about uh revi- revocation rights. Um, and my understanding of those is the those rights apply if the use becomes nonconforming for whatever reason. But if it's on public property or public right of way, uh, I think it would be prudent to have a mechanism to revoke those even if it is conforming to previous uses. Uh, the example I'll use is if there's right of way improvements that need to remove this use to be able to execute that. Uh, the city should have a mechanism to be able to do that, provide they give it, give enough notice or uh, you know, can can do that, but I think that needs to be uh kind of looked at in this section.
I just wanted to jump in and say, I know these right of way use permits are used for a wide variety of things. Um, there has been one in the past related to uh an outdoor food and beverage establishment or the the outdoor dining portion of their establishment. And it has been allowed to operate on an ongoing basis by renewing that permit. Um, these permits can also be for things like material delivery for construction sites when they need to drop off a large load of lumber in the right of way or things like that. Um, they can be for festivals or farmers markets or various things that use public streets and sidewalks. So kind of similar to temporary uses, there's a really wide variety of things that fall under those permits. But we can provide a little more information about the process for the next meeting.
Uh, other comments?
Uh, yes, this is Chair Thompson. I have a question. Um, under nineteen oh six one three oh, uh, temporary use permit on private property is the temporary use exempt from any regulatory limits in the single family zone such as height, impervious surface limits, which are called lot coverage, um, gross floor area to lot area ratios and yard setbacks?
Uh, yes, as proposed um in section E two. Um, the underlying development standards of the zoning designation um would would not apply to the temporary use.
So just to clarify, there is no limit on the size or scale of a structure that can be up for two hundred and ten days in a single family zone under this ordinance.
Sorry, if I if I could jump in, yes, that that is, the clarification is correct. So I just wanted to jump in because this is another good example of when, if that's a concern, we can, you can propose an amendment. Um, so this um nineteen oh six one thirty E two could be amended to establish some kind of height limit or maintain that height limit of for the underlying zone. Part of the challenge here, one of the the considerations that we'll need to take into account is that some of those uh, some of those limitations may make things more difficult for some common temporary uses. So for example, a front yard setback could make it difficult to have a garage sale because you usually your garage sale would be like in your front yard. And so that's part of the thinking here. One of the other, one of the other checks that we have i- in the current draft is um the requirement that the site be returned to its original um condition at the end of the use or when the use is uh ceased. So that's another thing to consider, but definitely, again, my my main reason for chiming in here is that if there's a concern about E two um a- as it's currently drafted, uh, your comments over the next two weeks could propose a a change there and the commission could consider that at its next meeting.
I would also add that the commission will want to look at those criteria that are in E one. There are eight different criteria that any temporary use permit applicant is going to have to meet. And so um, that may um, you know, decrease the height that an application, that an applicant proposes, et cetera.
Uh, based chair, if I may really quick, and I apologize, I was um I did not introduce myself the first time I spoke this evening. Uh, for the record, I'm Jeff Thomas with CPD. I only wanted to to add here or to reemphasize the um the draft temporary use and structure regulations. Staff are not proposing any changes. Uh, Molly, correct me if I'm wrong about that, but staff are not proposing any changes to the current interim regulations that are in effect um, that were adopted in the spring of last year. So um, it is important, Adam has hit on this a couple of times, both in his first presentation this evening and then uh here with comments during this item. Um, these interim regulations uh that we have rolled forward now to the planning commission for review for a permanent adoption by city council. Um, this is the planning commission's um key opportunity to um, give consideration to these interim regulations and deliberate on what changes uh the planning commission would recommend to city council uh as these transform themselves from interim regulations to permanent regulations.
Right, thank you. Uh, Commissioner Accuse?
Hi, thank you. Um, I have two comments. One is pretty minor, so I'll start with that. It's under uh temporary use permits, uh, D one A. Um, just a clarification, it says tents or other temporary structures used in conjunction with any garage yard or state sales shall not exceed a hundred tw- twenty square feet in area. Is that per tent or total? Because it's a ten by twelve pop up. What if they want to have two ten by twelve pop ups? Can we clarify that or can I work with staff to?
Um, that would be a good uh clarification to make um in an amendment.
Okay, um, and then my second comment has to do with um uh, in part what uh Chair Thompson asked, which I think is a really important question. And the planning commission really struggled with this with the tennis bubble um question last year because it it is a little bit arbitrary. Um, what is injurious to neighbors? What does cause a nuisance for neighbors in terms of height, view shed, things like that? So um, there are two items that I think are somewhat ambiguous that I think we should be clarifying. One is uh C under application. Um, there's a statement, the application shall contain all information deemed necessary by the code official. Um, I do a lot of permitting in my work. Uh, that's a real uh humdinger right there because you can have a different code official, um, depending on who you have or what day of the week it is, give you different guidance. Um, all of these codes are, um, they can't apply to every single circumstance. So um I'm wondering if we want to like strengthen the language around that to make sure that it is consistent with the newer state laws that say we can't have any arbitrary standards, because those are new um, new state laws. I think it was last year or the year before that you cannot have arbitrary standards in your development code, so let's make sure we don't do that. The other place where I see that could potentially be problematic is um E one D. It says adequate parking is available to serve the temporary use. Um, and if applicable, the temporary use does not occupy required off street parking areas for adjacent or nearby uses. Um, that one seems a little bit arbitrary as well. How is adequate parking going to be evaluated? Do we have standards for that? Um, because that parking issue, it's a, it's a third rail with the public. Some folks thinks people should walk and some folks think that there should be a parking spot for every individual that wants to come somewhere at any time. So um, I think kind of tightening up that language or having some um and I don't know how we do this, you know, I I love scenarios or and examples because they really help folks understand intent. So um, I might reach out to staff and ask if we can work on, work on that a little bit. I think that's all I have. Thank you.
Commissioner Nice?
Can can I jump in real quick? I just wanted to, on the application material requirements, so um, there was a change in the state law that was adopted in twenty twenty four, um, maybe twenty twenty three, it's all running together now. But uh, uh, House Bill fifty two ninety um that requires there be clear um, but the, it changes a lot of requirements for how we process permits. Uh, but one of the, one of the key things from that bill is we have to include in the application forms uh, uh, any, any materials that are required for that application to be deemed complete. Um, so as we, as we administratively put together these forms, we have to include all of those things that would be required by the code code official under C. So we don't necessarily have to establish all of those things in the code. Um, the, some of those things are, were required to do them um on on the the application form itself.
Thank you, Commissioner Nice.
Yeah, I guess as I was reading this, part of my uh questions were around, what are we? Are we trying to encourage certain activities as a city? Uh, I would imagine that you're trying to encourage things like food trucks, things in the downtown area that energize spaces that are temporary, that people might go by and say, oh, that's new. That doesn't happen when you do a building, it takes too long. Um, I'm hearing also bubbles over tents that seems like a different category to me. Um, Commissioner Accuse brought up a point that I was also looking at, making notes about parking. Um, and I think we should dive into that a little bit deeper. Uh, in terms of application, I'm thinking things like food trucks, person appli- app- applying for that. Are they going to really do, like, there's some verbiage in here that says uh, shall not result in the site providing less than the required minimum number of parking stalls. Well, how does somebody do that? How do they know what the required count is supposed to be for the location they're at? Hmm, I'm thinking a food food truck or even um a festival, that's a little bit beyond their, um, are they going to hire a professional to do a parking study? Or look back at uh old uh application uh documents for when some facility was built or some project was built uh to pull the data from that. Uh, are we trying to reduce some of those um uh burdens to make the process easier for for some of these people while also protecting neighbors against tennis bubbles that might be forty feet tall? Um, it almost seems like there's two different kind of projects here that I assume we do want to encourage things like food trucks and make the process easy for them. Otherwise, no one's gonna do it, or they're gonna do it without a permit.
Can I just, Chair Thompson, I just want to say something uh to um Commissioner Nice. What we have here that was on the docket two years ago, there were two temporary use ordinance, two separate. The cities had a temporary use ordinance that applied to public property and to minor things like garage sales, weddings, things like that, uh, pretty minor. And that's what you see in the first part of this ordinance. The second one was the country club's um application for what they called a temporary use ordinance to put the bubble on the uh their tennis courts. But there was no possible way that anyone could figure out that that would meet the regulatory limits in the single family zone. Uh, the mayor attempted to convert that to a rezoned commercial office. None of us understood at the time that you must have a minimum thirty nine foot height limit for uh an indoor tennis court. And the commercial office zone is thirty five or thirty six feet. So you hit on something that, of course, I saw myself, that we have two temporary use ordinances here. The first one that the city proposed, that for some reason the planning commission didn't recommend and the council didn't adopt is a very good ordinance. It made sense. The city wrote it, it's about their property, uh, maybe some things in the uh private neighborhoods. But the one that we have with the country club uh is a completely different um temporary use ordinance.
And then if I, if I could jump in here too. Um, so on, you were talking about um uses that we want to encourage and how we want to navigate that. So certainly, if you're looking at this and you're thinking about you're looking at the regulations as they would apply to food trucks, if there's something that, like the parking requirement, may need to be adjusted, um, that would be the kind of policy direction or the kind of direction that would help us kind of refine the draft. So if
the draft. So if, again, as we're, as you're going through this, I'm going to sound a bit like a broken record, but if you find those lines that that need to be amended, that's really, really helpful information for us. The, the more specific the comment, the better. And then the, the question about, you know, what, what uses are desired, I think is, that's a trickier thing to nail down. So certainly if you have insight into that or a an opinion about that, that's useful to share as well.
I also had a handful of comments parking related. As it relates to the commerce on public property, I think commonly the uses in, on public right-of-way are taking up public parking spots. And I think there should be a review mechanism to make sure that the city is not giving up those parking spots unreasonably, or I, I think those are of value to the town center and so if there's some objective way to make sure that, you know, during that review process, that is being looked at. Parking on private property, so the criteria does mention that adequate parking is available. I think Commissioner Accuse noted that, you know, there's some ambiguity in what adequate means. And then in section, would that be F two B specifically talking about food and beverage? It, it says that parking standards are waived during the temporary use. My understanding is that this provision was put in place during a COVID and indoor dining was not a possibility and therefore, you know, just generally the number of patrons were lesser and then that was the basis for exempting the parking use. In this scenario, now the indoor use is there and we would be expanding the number of people that can visit a area. So I, I think instead of exempting them from parking requirements, I, I think at minimum, the parking requirements should be maintained because of how many people are going to be visiting them. And I think the maintaining the parking count is what's really needed to keep businesses healthy in, in our town center. Any other comments?
Well, this is Chair Thompson, and I submitted my writing. I was out of town, so I didn't do it as early as I would like to, and I will be, of course, proposing some amendments, but I'd like to give you kind of some of the wrap-up of my comments on this, which mostly has to do with the temporary use on private property. I've been doing this for fifteen years. I was intimately involved in the two temporary use ordinances. I think Jeff Thomas is a great director of the community planning department, but I've also lived under Scott Greenberg and Evan Maxim. So we're giving this tremendous discretionary authority to the code official. I feel that this is the tail wagging the dog. The council wanted to allow the country club to erect a forty-foot cover over its tennis courts. And now we're trying to go back and try to figure out a legal way to do that because a rezone wouldn't work. When it comes to some of these, like garage sales and weddings and things like that, I've lived on Mercer Island for nineteen seventy, since nineteen seventy. I don't think anyone has ever applied for the probably ten thousand garage sales and weddings and everything else that we've had on the island during that time with any problem. I mean, they last like a day or two. And I don't think they're ever going to apply now. I mean, we can adopt this. They're not going to apply. They're going to put it on next door and say there's a garage sale. I also don't think people buy a house in the single-family zone on Mercer Island because they want to have their neighbors like run a thrift shop or a food truck or a business out of their garage or house for a hundred and eighty or two hundred and ten days a year or even nine months, you know, the way that the regulations are written. We're getting into sensitive area here, and that's the point I made to the council. We're fundamentally changing the residential development standards. And we worked really hard in two thousand seventeen to draft those and to bring peace. So the amendments that I'm going to be proposing are two. I think number one, in two thousand seventeen, a former council member, Dan Grous, and I fought very, very hard for public notice, especially development permits. So people weren't shocked. So they get thirty minutes. So I'm going to propose an amendment that all of these temporary use permits are a type-two permit, so that there is the thirty-day public notice. We can't have a situation where, according to this ordinance, the code official is going to weigh the interest of the applicant and the neighbors, but the neighbors don't even know that the application has been filed, can't file comments. And by the time that the permit is issued, the period under Lupa for appeal will have run. We can't do that. We have to give them notice, just like we would for a building permit for a new house, even though there is probably not that much ability to appeal that. So I think that's critical. Public notice is critical. Second is, I would like to eliminate the provision in this that exempts temporary use permits in the single-family zone from the regulatory limits. We're talking two hundred and ten days a year that they call temporary or nine months. I mean, I don't want my neighbor with a tennis court to put up a forty-foot building five feet from my property, nine months a year. I just don't think that that is what the residential standard would be. The other provision that I can see, because what's driving this is the country club. This is driving this whole section, you know, how do we make the country clubs bubble legal, but not impair all of the residential zone? I think we might have to tie the permit type to the length of the temporary use permit and whether it's going to exceed the regulatory limits. So, for example, they have a provision that there are some exempt projects, you know, weddings, garage sales, all the stuff that goes on there. I could see that being a type-one where there's no public notice if it's, the duration is less than one or two weeks and it does not exceed the regulatory limits. However, if it's going to exceed more than two weeks, I don't care if it exceeds the regulatory limits. There should be the type-two notice, thirty-day notice. People need to know if there's going to be some commercial activity or something near their home. Next, if we get into the situation where it's going to be more than two weeks, let alone a hundred and eighty or two hundred and ten or days or nine months, and it's going to exceed the zones regulatory limits. Then I think we're looking at a type-three permit. And it should be limited to a hard cap six months, a year. And I think it should need to go to the council for approval. I don't think the council gets to send this type of ordinance and what they did on the country club down to us and sit there and say, approve this. And then all the other ones come in, and I've seen them do it before, and I love this council, everybody knows that. Where they sit there and say, well, there's nothing we can do. You know, we can't do it. If they want to approve it, they can approve it. So those are the, or those are the, I'm giving you the advance of the amendments that I'm going to make because I think we're really skating on dangerous territory in the single-family zone when these things start to occur. That's my comments.
Are there any other comments? All right. Thank you, Molly.
Just real quick before we move on, just as a reminder, we're, we're looking for comments by March fourteenth. And we're, and we're asking you to send those directly to Molly and don't CC the other planning commissioners. If you'll remember from last month, we talked about Open Public Meetings Act. We want to avoid creating an online meeting. So please send them to Molly and we'll distribute them to the planning commission that way.
Great. Okay. The final item of regular business is Planning Commission Agenda Bill twenty-five zero four, Planning Commission Bylaws Adoption. Welcome Deputy City Clerk Deb Estrada.
Thank you, Vice Chair. I do not have a presentation for you. This is really your opportunity to review with the entire commission, your, the three proposals, excuse me, the three amendments that were suggested in addition to staff's recommended amendments. We had two by Chair Thompson and one by Commissioner Nice. I have those summarized if you want me to touch on them or if you would, okay. I wasn't sure if, if the two of you wanted to speak to your amendments. So the first amendment was to regular meetings suggesting that the meetings start at five o'clock rather than six o'clock. And this also was for special meetings as, excuse me, not putting a time on special meetings, but the first one was starting the meetings at five rather than six. And then the next one, I believe this was brought up by Commissioner Thompson, was not to put a time on or was to put, excuse me, a time on special meetings and to start at five o'clock unless they were impractical. Staff offered you their feedback regarding that. Special meetings are, usually we don't set them, set a time for them. They can be called, you know, it's, it's at the will of the council, or excuse me, the commission when we hold a special meeting. One example would be, for instance, when we had the need to hold a special planning commission meeting back in November, that was actually held at a little after ten o'clock in the morning. And that was to accommodate holiday schedules, commissioner schedules, so on and so forth. So the the beauty, for lack of a better word, of holding a special meeting is having the, the flexibility to hold it when it is convenient for the commissioners. And then another item was, and forgive me, I don't know who made this recommendation, but it was a recommendation under discussion protocols in section six point three, that the chair should establish a timeline for commission discussion at the start of an agenda item and that commissioners will seek to limit discussion to fit within the established timeline. Lastly, our outside legal counsel pointed out to me this afternoon that we missed a staff recommended amendment, and that was to section seven. Currently, it says that it says that a majority vote, being four votes of the entire membership of the planning commission or to amend the bylaws. That's inaccurate. A majority would actually be three. And so we would need to change that from four to three to be correct.
Okay, I, I guess I'll lay, from a process standpoint, what I'd like to do is start with a motion to approve the bylaws and then from there we will have motions within the main motion to vote on proposed amendments. So commissioners, may I have a motion, a motion to adopt the bylaws?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
There is a motion by Chair Thompson and a second by Commissioner Accuse to adopt the bylaws. Is there any discussion on the item? This would be the time to propose any amendments.
This is Chair Thompson, and I would like to propose a motion to the motion. That motion, as I submitted in writing, would be an amendment to bylaw four point two A that would amend the language that states the meeting shall be held at six P M. on the first business day following the holiday or another day designated by a majority vote of the planning commission. To meeting shall be held at five P M. on the first business day following the holiday or on another day designated by a majority vote of the planning commission.
Is there a second? I'll second that. There is a motion by Chair Thompson. I'm going to paraphrase here to revise the meeting time from six P M. to five P M. And there is a second by Vice Chair Gibson. Is there any discussion on this item?
Well, I'll, I'll begin since it's, it's my motion. It, it's not something that affects me one way or the other. I work on Mercer Island. I can be at the community center in five minutes. However, as I put out in the written discussion of my proposed amendment, I'm pretty sure staff would like the five P M. All the other meetings start at five P M. And it allows them to get to their families or what, whatever earlier. My only caveat was I was worried about Commissioner Nice, who does not live on Mercer Island.
Any other comments? Commissioner Accuse?
Yeah, I'm, I'm opposed to the amendment. With all respect to staff, because I've been in your shoes and had to go to a lot of evening meetings, I think the reason that the planning commission meetings are different than the other meetings is because we're talking about items often like the comp plan items or this temporary use that could really impact people's day-to-day and we have topics where people are very passionate and you might get a hundred people in here wanting to comment. It becomes a bit of a community event. Folks work, people are going back to work, they're being required to go back to work. So requiring us to start these at five would exclude a lot of folks in our community who have to work. I, I'm fortunate to get to work on island, but I think it would be very difficult for the public, especially when a really hot topic comes up, for everyone equally to be able to get to these meetings at six o'clock. I would be open to like a modification to this that said typical business is five o'clock, but if it's, you know, at the, at the discretion of the commission, you could have a later time meeting. I just want to, I, I think that gets a little complicated though, so I'll close there. My preference is to keep it at six so that the public can come for hot topics.
All right. Any other comments? Deputy, Deputy Clerk, please conduct a roll call vote for this amendment. Commissioners, please turn on your microphones.
And just to restate the motion again, I will also briefly summarize what you said, Chair Thompson. I'll get the exact wording from, from the audio later, but it was to amend four point two A to change the start time of meetings from six P M. to five P M. The motion was made by Chair Thompson, seconded by Vice Chair Gibson. Roll call vote, Commissioner Nice?
Nay.
Vice Chair Gibson?
Aye.
Chair Thompson?
Yes.
And Commissioner Accuse?
Nay.
Okay, the motion fails with a two-two vote.
Motion to amend fails. Are there any other amendments that would like to be proposed? Chair Thompson, did you want to propose the second half of the time?
I was going to withdraw that. I thought the staff's explanation was very good on that. We do have quite a bit of discretion, so I won't propose a motion on that. I'm also going to withdraw my motion on limiting the time of the discussion. I think maybe I can, I sympathize with Commissioner Accuse with the last planning commission, but I see, so far it seems that with five paid practitioners, it's moving very quickly without a lot of extraneous stuff, so maybe that's not necessary.
Okay. Any other proposed amendments? Any other proposed amendments? Commissioner Akus?
I rather like the amendment that was proposed. So I'm wondering if I could re-propose it after it been withdrawn or maybe under a different, I did, I was going to submit one, but Commissioner Thompson beat me to the punch, so I did not submit one. Yeah, I'd like to make a motion that we keep commissioner's speeches to five minutes or less for an individual speech.
Is there a second? Hearing none.
There's nothing.
We, we move on?
That's correct.
Motion fails.
All right, motion fails. Are there any other amendments to consider?
Vice Chair, we do have the one that our legal counsel suggested is more of a, I guess since it wasn't in your packet.
Yeah, I could take a run at it here.
That would be wonderful. Thank you. I appreciate that.
So I move to amend Section 7 to revise the majority vote from four to three. Is there a second? There is a motion by Vice Chair Gibson and a second by Commissioner Akus to amend Section 7 to revise the majority vote from four to three. Is there any discussion on this item? Hearing none, Deputy Clerk, please conduct a roll call. Commissioners, please turn on your microphones.
Thank you. Okay, Commissioner Akus?
Aye.
Vice Chair Gibson?
Aye.
Commissioner Nice?
Aye.
And Chair Thompson?
Aye.
Thank you. Motion passes 4-0.
All right. Are there any other amendments that would like to be proposed? Hearing none, I, Deputy Clerk, please conduct a roll call to approve the main motion as amended.
Nicely done. It's hard to keep track of all those dinosaurs. Okay, Vice Chair Gibson?
Aye.
Commissioner Nice?
Aye.
Commissioner Akus?
Aye.
And Chair Thompson?
Aye.
Motion passes 4-0. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Now we move on to other business. Is there a staff report this evening? Hearing none. The next regular meeting is scheduled for Wednesday, March 26 at 6:00 PM. There being no other business to come before the planning commission, the time now is 7:36 PM and the meeting is concluded. As a reminder to the commissioners, please stay seated until city staff has terminated the broadcast.